This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you, everyone. We'll call the meeting over before I call the roll. I'd like to remind everybody to please be settled, treat each other with courtesy and respect. Please go ahead and sit down. Call the meeting over at five o'clock. This is the first regular meeting of the month for Savannah Township Order Trust Base. The date is 2/5/2026, and it's time is five o'clock. Davey, you call the roll.
Yes, so Mr. Gentlemen, here, Mr. Mollin, here, Mr. Grant, over here.
Let's prepare for a pledge of allegiance. That's allegiance to my father, of that I have given to the republic, which is on the issue. Give it to this call. All right, I'd like to find out if there's any additional approval of the plans of...
Sorry? Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Yes. Next item on the agenda, is there any additions or additions? Do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
John?
No, we do not.
Oh, we're going to have anything to... Well, I know we're going to move up the introduction of the new fire plan. Anything other than... Okay, got it. We're going to move up the introduction of our new fire plan up to seven eight. Next item on the agenda is hearing of the public for agenda items. Later we'll have hearing of the public for non-agenda. Anyone here want to address an agenda item? Okay, we'll move on to Sunday. That will be the introduction of one of our new firefighters. Let's get people. Thanks, Chris.
Good evening, officials.
Well, we've got multiple, huh?
We have multiple. We actually have five new team members, firefighters, paramedics. John Holman, he's not able to attend tonight, but we'll get him here at another meeting in the future. Same for Josh Kowalski, he came back right from fire school at the U.S. Fire Academy and had a baby. So, our first new team member here is Adam Bryant, he comes to us from the private service local ambulance. He just finished U.S. Fire Academy. Second is Reyes Garcia, he's a firefighter too, has some experience with Bedford Township. He's a member of the 180th. Then we have Caleb Lawman, she's currently an EMT firefighter, or paramedic firefighter one. She'll be heading off to the academy in February 2023. So, congratulations, Adam on the...
Welcome.
Great, gentlemen.
Welcome aboard.
Say it round town, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys. Okay. If you want to take a break from our interesting meeting, go ahead.
Where's your chance?
You want to be there.
Yeah, I'm telling you, keep on going.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning department. We've got a public, uh, public area construction project by the third. So, moving on, I have a real relation to Rowan, that's the department.
I have two items on the agenda. First item is 22-174. This is to approve the plan and advertise for bid the 2023 Savannah Township resurfacing project. We're able to get this out a little early this year, and better than better. There's a lot of competition for work next year, so we're going to advertise as soon as possible on this project. The project was in a small conference room, had an opportunity to take a look at it. Hopefully, we get some better pricing earlier than we did. Questions?
There's no questions. Mr. Nash, I'll move resolution 22-174. Approve the plan and advertise for bid for the 2023 Savannah Township resurfacing project.
Second? Calling the roll, Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Next item is the road service report, my final report for 2022. Had an opportunity, I'm sure you did, to review it. I've got some items I'd like to point out. Obviously, we have had a brush pickup and a storm, or a leak pickup, and it's going well. We're on our third, what would be most residents' final round. We may have an opportunity to go back up in the northeast and get section one through 11 one more time. Weather dependent, but I think pretty confident we'll be able to do that. Those are generally the heavy areas of the township, wooded areas as well, so for work, nice. Other items, now, if you look into the construction on number two. You know, during this period, we pretty much completed most of our major projects. The 2.8 mile PWC project is probably more than 96% complete by now. We're just doing a few little touch-ups, and we're waiting on the final assessments to make the final payment on that. As well as the 2022 resurfacing. Just a reminder, on that project, we did receive $180,000 in grant money from ODOT to help complete that project. Great deal, we helped. Our parking lot resurfacing project, there's a few little items in the punch list. Each little parking lot, or each parking lot, has a few little items that need tidying up yet that they're still going to be working on. I'll try to notify anybody if there's an issue with parking or anything like that, we'll take care of. We did a record number of ADA ramps this year, 59 total ramps replacement. So, this is due to some of the older neighborhoods that got resurfaced or that will be resurfaced next year. And those ramps are a requirement whenever you do a major private resurfacing in the area. So, upgrade those to bring them up to current COVID scheme. One other item, you know, under the service department. They had a brief this year, this last quarter, completing a lot of ASEs and DVTs. Just to note, we have two masters certified truck technicians, master certified EVT level three. So, those guys really put a lot of effort into it, they're working well together out there now. And I think the future looks good for them. I think that we have two EVT certified individuals to be able to work on issues if need be. There's a backup needed for the fire department. Other than that, I don't have any other major issues or comments regarding that. If you have any questions, we have to answer.
I think, John.
Done.
Yeah.
You got that word?
Yep.
Neither, but I like when you summarize this term one's for. That's a lot easier than getting three, four. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is the fire department, a resolution. Okay, that, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know how I'm listening.
Right, exactly. Okay. Well, first, I'd like to say it's been a long time coming to get this resolution before you guys. So, I'd certainly like to thank some of our team members, Jennifer, Mr. Gurrell, and Mr. Turner with getting this here. Because it was quite the task. So, according to your consideration, resolution 22-174 for replacement of our self-contained breathing apparatus compressor. The current one was purchased in 2005, it's no longer an FBA compliant. We did go through the competitive bid process. The one that was most closely is what's recommended, some medical engineers. Only had one exception. Pretty much hit it spot on.
Any questions?
I do that, I see.
I'll move resolution 22-181, opposition to award the judge purchase of the self-contained breathing compressor.
Second? Calling the roll, Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next item, chief of?
We just had resolution 22-175, that's to exhaust our current eligibility lists. So, that's all that is, we need to get that exhausted in January, we will advertise for new tenants. So, right now, this is just to exhaust our current eligibility list.
There's no questions. I'll move resolution 22-175 to a resolution to exhaust the police officer eligibility list.
Second? Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
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 Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner? Next item is the administration. We have one item remaining.
Are you impressed, because it's a lot of incentive? There is one resolution under the administrators category, resolution 22-170. Resolution adopting an updated vacation policy. The revised policy includes several grammar updates, and would also update the policy to allow vacation to be taken in thirty minute increments. And would also provide an option to non-youth employees, rather than carrying over 40 hours of vacation leave on an annual basis. They would be able to convert that into cash payment. But is there any questions before we have?
If there's no questions, I'll move resolution 22-170, a resolution adopting an updated vacation policy.
Second? Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, thanks, Howard.
Next is the legislature report.
I'm going to review the monthly analysis of October. These two first. And you look at our numbers, again, we're fortunate here, we actually have... Our revenue is on, that's due to basically increased tax collection revenue, and it's not due to any trustee increases in taxes. It's just the way that I reflect. And that's home value, and so this helps us with our revenue that we're receiving. And if you look at our expenses, we're doing well there too, at the end of October. They're right about, they're well lower than what we would anticipate them being if you look compared to 2021. But we're doing very well, we're holding line expenses, I think. And so, always happy to see that. That's all. If there aren't any questions, I'll move on to resolutions.
There's no questions. I have to take the resolution. That was 1270, what do you expect?
Yeah.
For your resolution?
Yes, resolutions are 22-176, it's to establish new revenue and expense accounts for the 20.3 budget. As you can imagine, when we're getting this budget going, we need to establish new accounts for like various requirements, any of them are the requirements. Just other different sorts of money coming in. So, we will leave that for the coming 2023 year.
Wow, this is a thing we do, correct?
It pretty much is.
Yeah. Resolution 22, I'll move resolution 22-176, establish new revenue and expense accounts for the 20.3 budget.
Second? Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is for... Next is for resolution 22-177, that's the township annual appropriation resolution. This is requiring an application, although we do this again every year. And so, I would ask the trustees to approve this resolution.
There's no questions. I'll move resolution 22-177, township annual appropriation resolution.
Second? Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Yes.
Next is resolution 22-182, and it's approval of these schedules. Well, you had a chance to see it, it's in our, it's in our packet. I read it right, one year, it's 22-170. Oh, yeah, 182, that's right. Yeah, okay.
I think we saw a rap list, and then we saw a deal on the agenda.
Yes.
And I think the board needs to... I don't know, you know, the last time we did it, it was... I don't know why.
Thank you, trustee Cringle. Fire department have numerous updates through this budget development process. The fees that are proposed for police department and administration and association cemetery have been in place for several years. Those have come to the board separately. And the schedule for zoning was updated by the board perfectly this year. But the concept was that by presenting it all at one time, at the same time, whether it is approved. It helps to more effectively attract fees, and helps just create a little bit later transparency to the process.
Any questions, Mr. Turner? If there's no questions, I'll move resolution 22-182, approval of these schedules.
Second? Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And also, Mr. Turner?
Resolution 22-178, appropriation from common balance, and reducing the whole.
Any question? Any small questions? I'll move resolution 22-178, township appropriation from funds and use appropriations.
Second? Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Yes.
Over on the hundred. This is the most resolution ever. Challenging our zoning office here. Next is resolution 22-170. And so, I think I have an order on my desk here. This is potential appropriations with the same fund, based on year-end adjustments. And so, we're just moving bodies with the funds as we get toward the year end. Maybe a little bit more money with that certain fund, we just move it from a neighboring fund to the same department, and move it all the way to there. That's what helps us in, you know, it's all part of budgeting expenses. Sometimes you spend a little more than what you think, sometimes you got a little extra, we move along. So, I mean, yes, the trustees to approve this resolution.
If there's no questions, I'll move resolution 22-178, township appropriations.
Second? Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes. Yes.
I have the resolution 180 here, and that is to transfer funds between the general fund and the general capital fund to offset some of the costs for the regained wall, which are being paid out of the general fund.
If there's no questions, I'll move resolution 22-182.
Yes.
To place the property.
Second?
Why is this coming out of the general fund and not the...
To help the fire. Right, to help them. That's the...
We can do that discretionary.
Yeah, because general fund can, I mean, help anything, and they're transferred to their own capital project fund. So, basically, that's the way we employ it.
Would you, let's see.
If there's no questions, I think I move...
You move the, your second, the upper role, but I don't, Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
That's all I have of stuff.
Okay, and we already told the report.
Yes.
We've got about 10 minutes before a summary period, so we can move to the next agenda, which is hearing of the public for non-agenda. Is there anybody here who wants a non-agenda? All right, we'll move on to open discussion in court, item number 14. Anything?
Wait, not yet.
No. John, did you get a notice of the health department to me yesterday?
I did just get an email from...
I didn't know if you'd be out of town or not, but I can't believe there's no law on negotiations. I guess you know I'm trying to...
No, I was, I just got the email, and I had to be able to make that.
Anything else, John?
No.
All right, next is the executive session.
We do have some things that that related to zoning. The border problem?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah. Yes, but please, that's... I think we've got an opening here for our joint opening here in the Auburn. I don't know what my...
Oh, wow. That comes...
Next item on the agenda is the poison warning number of the zoning board of the field. And I think we have more applications, I believe, than we've seen. I think it's, can everybody read it, Mr. Mollin? Oscar Mount. Right there. I think it was, but we've got four and one opening here.
I talked to a few people, I talked to a few people on this board, and I... When I did not talk to Stephanie Coleman, I did talk to Tim Schlock, but Tim thought, again, for discussion here, would be... This Yuri Osterhop, he'd be a great addition to the full-time board for the water zoning fields, and his background. He's from... Going into court, zoning field issues throughout Northwest Ohio Territory. He's got some real estate background, which I think is important, while you're looking at some of this stuff. But that was just my thought, and the other thought I had was for the alternate would be Mick Fire.
Well, that's how we only have one.
We want a regular one alternate.
Just the alternate.
Just the alternate.
Tonight, we were voting on a regular, you know?
Well, I think refilling was, I think.
Right.
Ah, okay.
Tim Schlock has chosen to re-up.
Ah, okay, okay.
I kind of want the civil engineer guy, Matt Smith, he could have a problem if he had a project, but... And in Auburn, he probably wouldn't... I'm open to anything, but I don't know any of these people. And this Phil, and I think you mentioned Yuri.
I do, that's, I know Phil, I know three or four of these folks, but I don't... But I...
I'll put the pressure on you, make a motion, and also...
All right, I'll make that one, boy.
Darrell, do you have any? Did you interview them all, and what was your process of...
No, I interviewed applicants for the zoning courts. I've met Mr. Percy, I hope I'm pronouncing it right, Osterhop. He was an applicant for variance earlier this year. I have a good impression of him, very professional, intelligent, but that's not to say the other three may not be, I'm just not aware of those people.
So, do you know?
I don't know any of them, I didn't read over them. I think the last couple came in in the last couple days, so I...
Tim did say about Stephanie Coleman, which I didn't get a chance, who was also a BCA, said that he's really... Tim said for sure he's probably really a good asset, or that's, I'm not speaking on behalf of Stephanie Stephanie. I never called Stephanie, just talking to Tim, it was good enough for me on that. So...
Sounds all right.
Yeah, okay, I'll move resolution 22-173 to appoint Oliver Bauer to the board of commissioners. I've been hearing, he owns your house.
Second?
Calling the roll, Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mollin?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is quite a good order, zoning fields, most appointments.
Yes, and Tim Schlock, who has requests to be reappointed, is a full-time member of the BCA.
I'll move to appoint Tim to the zoning board of the fields.
Second? Calling the roll, Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yeah.
Yes. Next item is the zoning commission.
And I don't know why these are up in order, but resolution number 22-185. This is to appoint a member to the zoning commission, like he's expressed interest in being reappointed.
Okay, I'll move to appoint Mike to the zoning commission, this term is up until the end.
Second? Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes. Well, this one surprised me, we're appointing a member to the zoning commission to... I thought it was just the zoning board, it's resolution 22-184.
Yes, and Mr. Blonsky has expressed interest in being reappointed.
Oh, okay.
The alternate is one-year term.
I'll move the reporter, Joe Blonsky, to the zoning commission as a member of the council. Resolution 22-184.
Second? Roll, Mr. Gentlemen?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we'll take a short recess, and at 5:30, we'll have reports going there, and we've got two years. So, if you have a question, thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
So, we'll go up to the very first line of the applicant, or if he was ever appreciated, we'll hear them. Then we'll hear comments or questions from people that are attending. And then, if some of them would like to be part of the act, there was... If there's any other things, the... Any kind of work, and then of course, we'll do this.
First zone change request is for 395 North La Corte Road. This property consists of two parcels, currently zone A3 agriculture, collectively measuring 1.28 acres. Single-family dwelling sits on the northern parcel, and the southern parcel is a vacant lot. Property is located on the west side of La Corte Road, approximately 500 feet south of Savannah Avenue. The parcels to the north and west are also zoned A3, former churches to the north, and senior residential care facilities to the west. To the east, on the opposite side of La Corte Road, is the large bank building, zone PUD, and then multifamily villa style, or on the zone R4 PUD, or to the south of the subject parcel. This request is for a zone change to R4 high-density residential. This request is for a zone change to R four high-density residential in order to construct a two-story sixteen-unit multifamily building. Request is compatible with the land use managed advocates neighborhood mixed uses for the southwest corner of McCord Road and Savannah Avenue. Neighborhood mixed uses include small businesses, small businesses and services, office buildings and high-density residential. The Lucas County Land Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to the township with the request of zone change. And this Savannah Township zoning commission also voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zone change to R four high-density residential. Zoning staff recommends approval of the zone change from A three agriculture to R four high-density residential for the properties at thirty-nine twenty-five North McCord Road, following four reasons. The proposed zone change is consistent with the Savannah Township land use plan, which recommends neighborhood mixed uses at this location. These uses include high-density residential. The proposed zone change is harmonious with the surrounding uses of zoning. The proposed zone change should not create unreasonable adverse impact upon the surrounding residential properties. And lastly, the proposed zone change is consistent with the purpose criteria and standards of the Savannah Township zoning resolution. Uh, the applicants here this evening and Sammy, if you could scroll down, um, we have, yeah, there's, there's two drawings submitted by the, that one. One after that, the board has also received copies of those.
Any questions? Your honor, I was wondering, this is not a P U D, right?
Correct, just three.
On the landscape, it looks fine. Are you okay? I don't know what type of plant these ones are.
Well, this, these are just conceptual drawings that will have to go through the project plan review.
Well, there won't be, there won't be a landscape.
Yes, that'd be required in the project plan.
Okay. Oh, I think that's it. Or my questions from Darrell, Jim, do you have, what's the board?
In a number to not take too much of your time, it's been unanimously approved twice, and I guess I'm hearing certain questions.
I was just wondering, what's the square equation of minutes, I know that that, do you know?
Well, basically, we've submitted a footprint, the, what that, it's, it's, and.
I just want to, it was all in, in court.
Yeah.
And there are two bedrooms, two beds.
Probably.
Each of them. Okay. If there's no questions, you'll close the hearing at five thirty-five, allowing, oh, I'm sorry. I'll move resolution twenty-two, one seventy-one to approve the zone change from A three agriculture to R four identity for the property sold to you at thirty-nine twenty-five North McCord Road.
Second. Call the role, Mr. General.
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Am I sleeping, was I, am I sleeping through this, don't we need to close the public hearing?
Yeah, we got.
We have to close.
Why are we voting? Or we need to close?
The resolution first.
No, no, close the public hearing.
I thought we were, I thought we were the public.
No, hopefully we close the public hearing at five thirty-five.
That's my.
No, you're good.
Uh, let's close the public hearing at five thirty-six, and I've already made the motion.
Mr. General, second, so, so, Mr. Gen, oh, and we, I, well, who are you call the role, Mr. General?
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, next item, I mean, closer.
Well, then I mean, sorry, we did not need to modify the resolution to approve or deny.
Oh, I think we.
Well, we had the vote here, we closed the vote here.
Yeah.
And now we need to, now we've made a vote on the resolution.
Yeah.
I need to close the resolution.
It's a lot harder to sleep here. Not you.
I can manage it.
Well, we do, we do, we do, we do. We, we do open. We close the public hearing.
Trying to do that, there's.
Yeah.
I thought we voted in the public. All right. So I'll move resolution twenty-two, one seventy-one.
Second. Uh, Mr. General.
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Yes.
I give.
Now that I bring up the public hearing for the next step, it's on five thirty-seven, and that's at seventy-six, fifty-seven, Over Road, Darrell.
Property consists of a point seven-four acre parcel at the western end of Over Road and the Trogawickham subdivision. Is occupied by sixteen hundred square foot single-family dwelling, is currently zone C two general commercial. Single-family dwellings also a Trogawickham subdivision above subject parcel to the east and south, one to the east is zone C two, one to the south is zone R A. An undeveloped parcel zone P U Ds to the west, and the former landfill zone R A is to the north. In two thousand and four, the entire Trogawickham subdivision, with the exception of a few parcels, was rezoned from A four rural residential to C two general commercial. This created non-compliance status for most of these parcels. While the residential use of these properties was permitted to continue under the new commercial zoning. In the event of more than sixty percent damage to the structure of the dwelling that we rebuilt, and the commercial rezoning created a difficulty for residential property owners to secure any findings. The applicant recently purchased the subject property and margin plans to continue the residential use. And they're seeking a change in zoning from C two to R A, low-density residential. And are to bring the property into compliance and gain the ability to obtain future findings. Request is not compatible with the land use managed advocates general commercial, commercial uses for the area north of Central Avenue and West King Road. However, the request does not create a zoning reuse, which is different from nearby uses, and is consistent with current use of the property. Lucas County Land Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval to the township with the request of change, and Savannah Township zoning commission also voted unanimously to recommend approval of the zone change. Zoning staff recommends approval of the zone change request from C two general commercial to operate low-density residential for the property. At seventy-six, fifty-seven, Over Road for the following three reasons. The proposed zone change is consistent with nearby residential uses. The proposed zone change should have minimal, if any, unfavorable impact on the surrounding area. And the proposed zone change should bring the current use into compliance with the zone district. I, the applicant, the applicant, she's here, she moved, she indicated that she might not be able to get out of court on time.
Uh, I don't think there's anyone, is anyone here with questions or comments and regardless of.
Should we open and close the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should, yeah. But before we do, I, I should, this isn't the first point we've seen.
Right.
In the subdivision, this is, apparently the banks have trouble with zoning, it's not in compliance, so.
But we, we, well, we opened the public hearing at five forty-seven.
I'm going to close it at five forty.
And then we'll vote on.
I think we vote on, I'll make a motion, close the public hearing at five forty.
Second. Mr. General.
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes. And no one wishes to speak, if you would make a note of that, thank you. Next item is resolution twenty-two, one seventy-two, which is to approve a zone change request of C two general commercial, R A low-density for the property located at seventy-six, fifty-seven, Over Road.
Did you make a motion?
Yes.
Second. Call the role here.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thanks, Darrell.
How do we go back to executive session? And I'll move anybody that we checked in session at five forty-one for collective party discussion.
Who will be attending?
Uh, it'll be collective officials, department heads, I'm not sure which ones, but it's, at least two. And I don't think, is the prosecutor's office?
Yes, they are.
Are they? Okay, I wasn't sure. And, uh, Mr. Turner.
Second. Mr. General.
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Recorded.
Okay.
Yeah, I move that we combine the executive session at six fifty-one.
Second. Uh, Mr. General.
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes. And, uh, I'm moving to turn at six fifty-two.
No action, they didn't see them?
No action.
Second. Mr. General.
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
All right.